And get thing, we got a action packed agenda today and some very good folks we're going to be talking to.
Yes, sir, Mayor, Members of Council, first up, Brian Solis, and he is going to give us a briefing on an after action report for something in the water and also a few words about the 2020 kickoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, and Mr. Leahy and Mr. Stiles, thank you for having me this afternoon. I am here to kick off a series of briefings related to something in the water. Believe they're very positive and hopefully well received. Like to thank, and we're going to go over this after action report, but I'd like to thank Chris Chandler for all of her diligent work and all the city staff that worked on it. So, following right into things, just to give you kind of a refresher, the first day, or even leading up to that, upon announcement, 25,000 tickets sold in 21 minutes. So, we increased that right away, within a few minutes, to 35,000, and that sold out a full month before the festival. So, but if you recall, Friday was not favorable, favorable conditions from a weather standpoint, some pretty nasty thunderstorms flew through, and in true first class fashion, the festival refunded ticket holders one-third of their ticket price for that, and that was pretty much done almost before the weekend was out. Some of the attendance figures at the main stage on Saturday, the peak was right around 35,000, but then on Sunday, in addition to folks kind of making their way back home, roughly 10,000 or so were at the pop-up church stage on Sunday afternoon into the evening and night, so hence kind of some of the attendance differences there on Sunday. As you may recall, the festival footprint was larger than we've accommodated here at the resort area before, was kind of in a tea-like fashion, with the main anchors being the Rudy Loop area, the two, 210th Street, actually, and for the first time, we actually fenced off, or the festival actually fenced off, the boardwalk and access to the beach during that time. We made it as tight of a timeframe as we could, but that was the first time that really, once you were in the festival footprint from the boardwalk to the beach, you were in a secure area, and it was primarily for ticket holders at that point. The pop-up church area, from about 20th Street to roughly 23rd Street, was another large stage area, as I mentioned, but that was primarily for two-thirds of Sunday. And then, as you go down the 19th Street, 17th Street corridors, we had some major activations with the other hub being at the convention center. As you'll see in the red there, in terms of some of the programming, the music was adjusted both Saturday night and Sunday night to accommodate some of the artists that were able to stay around, and so some of the music ran later than originally permitted, but we made that adjustment. So, this was kind of, as they say, the cartoon festival footprint, and one of the main differences between that technical site plan that showed you and this cartoon version, like you see on a lot of festival maps, the main difference here, you'll see all the circles with kind of the artist palettes, that's where, and it continues to live on today, the American Express Art Walk transpired throughout that week with the coaching of a national artist, B. Mike, from New Orleans, and, as I said, those works of art continue to live on today, whether it be mural art on the side of a building, or kind of propped up boards, if you will, of some of that art. This is a lot of detail, but it's what it's meant to show you is the begin date and the end date of six months, almost to the day, from when Mr. Williams announced the festival, when he came in town here, to the end of including the cleanup and rollout and breakdown of the festival in the first week of May, last week of April. So, we kind of had some corporate sponsors and partners, the festival did, that were beyond the realm of what we have seen before. These are a list of 25 major sponsors that, if they didn't otherwise have activations within the festival, they were partnering with other community activities such as at CTEC Achievable Dream Academy with the Urban Garden there, and some of the providing apparel, for example, by Timberland to some students, all the students, actually, at CTEC Achievable Dream Academy. Netflix had an activation, Walmart, actually during the pop-up church, they sponsored a food drive that if you brought in a canned good at the various locations, that you were given vouchers to have brunch there, leading up to pop-up church service that started around noon. Some other major ones were obviously Adidas, Oldhami University put on that, they called it a splash pitch, it was basically a Shark Tank type of competition with celebrity judges in partnership with Cox Communications, where teams of students were challenged themselves to achieve startup funding from the festival for mostly apps that they developed. And so, in terms of the programming itself, these were the lineups that were announced through social media on Friday, there were adjustments in some major artists on Friday, a lot of them had obligations elsewhere on Saturday, so they were not able to stick around and fit into the schedule, but others did stick around and play on Saturday or Sunday. In addition, there were several artists that are not even on this list that ended up coming up as surprise artists and performing. So, this is a little difficult to read, too, but it's meant to show you some of the programming, the community conversations, as they were called, that went on at the convention center, some call them TEDx talks, that were similar type of format, casual atmosphere up on stage with subject matter experts ranging from presidents and CEOs and chief officers with major corporations, from music to technology to health and wellness, that occurred throughout Friday and Saturday. So, in terms of city support, just to refresh, we kind of had a unique way because of the compact timeframe we had to plan within and the scope of the festival, we set up subgroups that were meant to have particular focuses. So, we had a safety and security subgroup, and you can see the purpose of them there, basically to implement, to develop, implement, review, and approve and permit safety and security plans, establish change of commands and communication trees, and that's not only within the city itself, but it's also with our partner agencies at federal and state level, as well as with the festival and its contractors. Transportation was a major part, and including transit with Hampton Roads Transit and the adjusted trolley route that they had, we had a group called Facility Support. So, whenever you have something at the oceanfront and along the boardwalk, there are certain areas that can support large-scale festivals with regard to electrical infrastructure, franchise utilities, water, and then everything from building the berm along the beach to, you know, providing some supplies for trash removal and coordination of some of those activities that were maybe outside of the festival footprint itself. And then communications, communications is key when you have so many different entities involved between the festival, the different brands that are involved, whenever you're using logos or trademarks, you know, those have to go through a certain chain of review and approval by your partners, and then, of course, on the city side, and then all of our partner agency side, so that was a big piece. And as we are already starting the planning for this year with the festival, starting in, you know, late July, we already are setting up in a similar framework to that. So, that was our planning, and this is our operations in terms of the week of and during the festival itself, we basically had four different areas from which the festival was managed. And for the city, the main area facility we were managed from was the second precinct, we called that basically the festival command, and that's where all the decisions were made with regard to anything that needed to go on operationally. The festival had what they called their branch operations area, which was in Rudy Loop, it was a series of pop-up offices, and the festival had high-level leadership in the city's command, and we had, we had public works and a, each of the three public safety departments represented in the festival branch as well, so there was a constant seamless communications involved with that. The EOC over here across the street, Emergency Operations Center, was stood up in order to kind of be outside of the festival footprint and be able to make decisions nimbly from there. It also has the best eyes on the resort area with the camera network, but as importantly, as you can see, it's all Julian here as well, the Joint Information Center was right across the hallway from the, in the EOC itself, and answering 311 calls and responding to what we call SITW alert, the festival alert, I bless you. And so, that was a very, the JIC in particular was very productive. The Traffic Management Center, this is the first time your traffic management center off of Dam Neck Road was used to dynamically affect traffic in response to event-related congestion. And so, with the network of cameras and the ability to change the signaling and on a immediate basis, they, Public Works was able to free-flow traffic to and from the park and ride at the amphitheater as needed, as well as make adjustments in the resort area, and we plan on doing the same this coming year as well. So, in terms of after-action items, coming away from immediately following the festival, we went kind of into after-action mode, and I'd like to compliment, you know, your emergency communications services and also communications offices on this immediate poll that was given to folks that over 9,100 had signed up for that SITW app. And that is, it was a city app to inform them of anything from weather to traffic to other news they may need to know throughout the festival. They were immediately polled, I think that six hours from 6:00 PM that Sunday night through midnight, and a very, very statistically reliable sample, 1,611 responded, and 95% rated on a scale of 1 to 10, you know, the festival as an 8 to 10, 80% had it as a 10. It was, the scale was awesome to waste of money, and it was totally skewed on the very, very high end of that. So, that was kind of the immediate snapshot of folks' reactions, that's both residents, visitors, ticket holders or not, that responded to that survey. So, this list of groups and property owners are who we conducted meetings with in order to get their feedback on what went well with the festival and what we could have improved on, and that ranges from the Virginia Beach Hotel Association, as you see, to the Human Rights Commission, Atlantic Avenue Association, the Resort Advisory Commission, and we also had a focus group of, a network of representatives from civic leagues that were in the area, business owners, and other civic groups that were, that we had a relatively large focus group that we facilitated feedback on. Your Oceanfront Task Force with Virginia Beach Vision also weighed in, and then sat down with the hour, hour and a half interviews with the property owners, the condominiums that are in that picture, actually, one of them anyway, and that is 401 Oceanside, that was right adjacent to the stage, and then right backstage Dolphin Run to listen to any concerns or input that they had, as they were the closest to the large stage and had music throughout the entire weekend, and their feedback was very, very positive. And that was, they were interviewed right after the Patriotic Festival, actually, so they had opportunity to kind of compare and contrast the traffic and how it was managed between those two festivals. So, in terms of positives, and this is kind of between all the groups that weighed in, both, we also did internal city staff stakeholder feedback on after-action reporting from all the different departments. So, we believe the overall atmosphere in the city and the region, and it emanated anywhere you were at the resort, for sure, was very positive and harmonious, which was seen to be the top goal of the festival and integrating that in with College Beach Weekend and providing an opportunity for people to be entertained if they're going to come and visit Virginia Beach on their college break in particular. We had very top-tier talent here, and not only in terms of the quality, but in terms of the quantity, I just went over 25 major corporate sponsors and partners, and then the top tier in terms of everywhere from the community conversations at the convention center to the Sony stage at 19th Street, to the main stage, to the Gospel Singers at the pop-up church. Traffic management plan overall worked, we can always do better, but in looking back at some of the numbers that we have, and also using that partnership that Virginia Beach uniquely has with Google Maps and Waze, we were able to actually input in traffic diversions ourselves, they weren't just crowdsourced, we were able to note SITW drop-off pickup points, park and ride locations, so we can direct folks to those locations that they were coming to the festival. We thought public safety did, they had a great time, from what I was told, working this event, and it showed, and their approach going in and coming away from the event. And then, a lot of the, and perhaps if we had more time, we could have communicated it even more, there was a lot of free events that visitors could take advantage of. If you wanted to go to the Sony activation, there was a separate line, but usually that separate line, and it was priority to ticket holders, there was not a wait, so it was no problem to go to some of those activations as well. And of course, the pop-up church service was free, and if you brought in, participated in the food drive, you even had brunch for free. So, as I wind down, the themes by the type, because, you know, depending on who you are, your perspective differs, so we had internal stakeholders, we had resort area businesses and residents, and then we had feedback from non-resort area businesses and visitors. Some of the themes are the same, but some of them were different. I think overall, in the city, communicate sooner and with more details, and we are learning from that, and we have already started down that path. There were some differences with this, I guess, planning process in terms of the short timeframe that we had to work within, and also the scale of the festival, but actually, with that permitting process, there are things that we could learn that we're going to apply to other special events. We may consolidate, we may not need four areas to manage the event, so we may consolidate that some, that's something our emergency operations folks are looking at in public safety. We could always plan parking better. Saturday night, there was a little bit of an issue with the park and ride at the convention center, you had a huge influx of folks wanting to use Uber or Lyft, and at the time, we did put the diversion in on the interstate, so the Uber and Lyft drivers had a little bit of a challenge getting to the convention center. Always improve on transportation, and you kind of see some of the others there. In terms of residents, communication was key, involve the residents and business owners sooner, I think we're learning from that. We're going to pass this on to the festival folks as well, some of these message points, and kind of a similar theme for some of the out-of-town visitors, one thing that we heard was, if this is something about, if this is something about something in the water, we want to develop local talent and provide venues for which to do that, associated with the festival, is some of the feedback that we heard in a major way. So, I wanted to introduce a few folks that are here with the festival, our local partner with the festival is Donna McMillan Whitaker, she's here, and Mr. Ford Englerth is here from Burbank, California, he is president of Red Rock Entertainment Services, and they are producing the festival this year with Live Nation, and just looking forward to getting on with the planning, and I'll be turning it over to Lyndon Ramirez here soon.
Any questions, comments?
And before I turn it over to Lyndon, I just wanted to thank Ron Berkaball, your economic analyst, Dr. Agawal with Oldhami University, and Dr. Bob Case, who conducted the surveying during the event, both on the beach and the convention center, associated with the economic impact analysis that Dr. Agawal is going to go over after Mr. Ramirez is done, so thank you for your time.
And if I could just say, you know, let me compliment so many people that really put this together, it really took a massive, given the magnitude of what we were doing, the fact that they put it together in a relatively short time period, the coordination with the event planners and our staff and public safety, you know, there were a lot of people that were out there, you know, and I'll tell you what, it was a total feeling of positivity, and I think this is something that we could take forward and keep going, and thank you to so many people that played a part in doing this. Lyndon?
So, Mayor, Members of Council, your city auditor now will brief you on the audit of the expenses and the costs the city incurred.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Members of City Council, thank you for having me today. I'd also like to introduce Gretchen Chudon, my deputy city manager, who worked closely with Brian in reviewing the expenses, and as you know, this is what in audit speak we call the results of agreed-upon procedures, so it is not a full operational audit, for example, the automated vehicle locator that I updated you on last week. So, we were specifically engaged to look at the expenses that were being reported. So, the objective, review the methodology and support of the city's accounting and compilation of in-kind expenses related to the festival, okay? And Brian and the folks in finance and throughout the city, they did a great job of compiling the expenses. The city actually uses a shared code, okay, and so some of the things we looked at in regards to the expenses were, were all the salary costs properly captured, overtime costs and other expenses, okay? So, what we found was, originally included in the expenses were salary costs that we felt should be backed out, so there were some salary expenses that were using the shared code, but because it's not necessarily reimbursement, for example, part of Brian's salary or the city manager's salary were included, and we consider those as like sunk costs, they're going to be paid regardless if it's charged to the festival or not. So, we analyzed those costs and backed out $78,725. Overtime costs that were related to something in the water, it had a code of something in the water but weren't coded to the shared code, that had to be backed in, so we added those back in, okay? And then, the bus services costs were actually reimbursed directly by the festival, and they were included in the expenses, but since they were already paid for, we backed that out, okay? So, you can see we made the adjustments by, to personnel costs, backing out the school buses, since it was already reimbursed, it didn't need to be included as an in-kind expense by the city. So, it's about 1.1 million related to the festival that was borne by the city, okay? And how were those expenses broken out? We had them in the various categories of consulting and contractual, we had some travel costs, equipment and supplies. So, just to break down a little bit, the housing, $13,230, that was primarily for the housing of the state police, most of that was at Camp Pendleton. $7,682 was the equipment rentally, so that's the dark pink, and that was rental of communication equipment, some of our golf carts and so forth. And let's see, the big blue was the consulting and contractual, a big component of that was the convention center, convention center parking and the related costs. And then, the pink related to various supplies, so some of the new signage, some of the radio equipment supplies, water and snacks for those that were working, we wanted to make sure, because a lot of them didn't have the ability to, you know, leave their specific We're testing out some new drone equipment, that was also in there as well. So, we did look at for the reasonableness to ensure that they did capture related expenses, and we didn't have any issues with that. So, about 112,000 worth of expenditures related to the festival, and some of this obviously wasn't consumed, you know, entirely consumed, so either going forward or for next year's festival, some of that equipment will still be available going forward for the city's use. All right, other than that, you know, we had a couple of small minor recommendations. Number one, establish a detailed written guidelines relating to authorizing, approving, and capturing allocated costs associated with large special events. And so, the city's used to capturing costs when it's a storm-related type event, and some of that is needed for reimbursement purposes, especially if it's reimbursement from FEMA. However, when we're having a festival, we are capturing costs not necessarily for reimbursement, so in some cases, under a storm-related event, we do want to capture salary, and we're coding some of our employees' salaries to that code, but when we're looking at specific related expenses, but not from a reimbursement standpoint, we just need to give some of our staff clarity so they know what to include and what to exclude when they're capturing their costs. We all sat down with Brian and reviewed the festival, and obviously, they have identified and we have identified as well, some best practices and their lessons learned from the festival, that obviously, some of our other festivals can implement where it's practical, okay? But other than that, we think, you know, the numbers presented were pretty accurate, fair, and the council, as well as the public, can rely on the numbers presented as far as the city's sponsorship and support costs.
Okay, thank you. Aaron?
I got a question, are we placing a value on advertisement? Because I like to capture that as well, I know we spend a couple million dollars a year in our advertising budget, right?
Yes, absolutely, and so, what we captured here were more of the actual, like, direct costs, like, actual out, you know, outlay, because there were, as far as from advertisement, I mean, I don't even know if you can quantify the amount of advertisement.
I'm sure you could.
The city has received.
I mean, from international publications to national, to radio, CBS interview, sure all that has a value when you talk about the money we spend on brochures, advertising in Virginia Beach in different markets, whether it's New York and other places. Here we have a festival that reached across the world, sure there's value you can place on.
Yes, absolutely, there is, we didn't do this as part of this because we were asked to look at the actual direct expenses, I don't know if, Brian, that's something you guys captured, because there is a way to quantify that.
And we're going to, economic, we're going to introduce Dr. Agawal here soon, he can go over a lot of that, but actually, the media coverage, I was just looking at near the end of your after-action report, that was in the Friday packages, you know, 16, over 1,936 pieces of media coverage from 36 countries, you're right, it's tremendous value with it, in addition to Mr. Williams' ABC interview with CBS This Morning, and a series, CBS This Morning was with a series of other television coverage from around the country, we did not put a value on that, so that is something additional that we should do in addition to what Dr. Agawal.
I think it's important that we do in terms of looking at our investment to the festival and what we're getting back in return.
Yes.
In the overall picture of things, I think we'll see that our relatively, it's an investment, but I.
Absolutely, the return on the investment.
The return on investment will be very, very large, as we can see, so.
Absolutely.
I'll like to capture that there.
Okay.
John Watts?
My question was your treatment of compensatory time?
Yes.
Because when you look at the city's bond prospectus, they always capture that as a potential liability, because if not taken, it has to be paid, but I know you didn't include it, so you're making the assumption that it will never be paid out, and in fact, that it will be taken, and the opportunity cost of when it is taken, the other costs are incurred.
We didn't factor that in, basically, we were just factoring the, evaluating the, you know, the straight costs that each of the respective departments attributed, so beyond what was actually coded from a dollar standpoint, that amount, but any opportunity costs or opportunity lost for that was not factored.
Let me come back from Claire, are you saying that for the compensatory hours that you documented in the report, they were converted? were converted to salary dollars as if they were paid and included in salaries? That's not how I read that, but is that what you're saying?
That was correct.
No, sorry. In the report itself, we mentioned just the hours, they are not included in the personnel costs that you have.
Well, here's why I mention it, because in a bond prospectus, that would be included as a liability, so in reality, it should be treated as a cost.
Right, and that's why we mentioned it in our report, because it was not originally put in there. But, and going forward, they will be attributing a cost to that.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Anyone else? Dave Linden, thank you again for your excellent and continued work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir, I would. Thank you, Mr. Leahy and Mr. Mayer. I'd like to introduce Dr. Vinod Agewal, who is professor of economics. He's the deputy director of the Dragus Center for Economic Analysis and Policy, and the director of Economic Forecasting Project at Oldham University. And he performed the regional economic impact. He's also going to give an overview of the city economic impact that Ron Burkabout did. And I appreciate him being here and appreciate his efforts.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's an honor and a pleasure to be here today. I want to thank a few individuals or entities. I was brought into this last year by former city manager Dave Hansen. He talked me into doing this study, and I was very pleased to be able to do so. I do want to emphasize that I directly did not receive any payment from my time. My time was being supported by the Dragus Center and my taste of India. The city did pay some dollars for purchasing some data, purchasing some models and graduate student assistance, and also to Dr. Robert Case for collecting the data. This project started in a hurry. We had about three days to develop a questionnaire, about three days to implement it, and we basically ran, Dr. Case and myself, we worked from Friday afternoon to about Monday morning, went through 11 iterations of the survey form. It was not perfect, but I think it was the best we could do. You know, I've been doing this type of analysis for the last 30 years. I was hoping to get 1,000 surveys. I've never come across in my life where we email surveys or did paper surveys, and we got such a huge response. You can notice here, we got roughly 8,000 surveys. I tossed out 1134 because of various reasons. If anyone is interested in knowing what the reasons are, I can document those. But I was not taking any chances on this, because I had enough observations to play with. We ended up having about 6,949 usable surveys, and when it came to expenditures, we have four categories, lodging, food and beverage, entertainment and others. Some individuals did not respond to all four questions, so I said, why don't we just simply take a common set? And the common set turned out to be 5692. I have tremendous amount of faith in these surveys. So let's talk about the surveys. 23% of visitors were from Virginia Beach. Other 34% came from other parts of Hampton Roads. The big guy here is not these guys, but the 43% who came from out of town, out of area. And by the way, I should also point out to you, if you look at the Virginia Beach residents who came to surveys, 48% of them said, we would go outside of this area to attend this festival. So that means you are able to retain their money into this area. Often it's called repatriation. Other 52% said, we would not go, so we call that a substitution. They would spend this money on other things, but they ended up spending on the festival. Likewise, if you look at that Hampton Roads, 57% of visitors, 56% of those were going outside of the area. So we were able to retain lots of money in this area. So if you look at distribution, visitors from Hampton Roads, all major cities are significant part of it. 42% from Virginia Beach, 14.7% from Norfolk, 14.2% from Chesapeake, and my two other numbers I'm not showing, got about 8.5% or 9% from Hampton and Newport News. A 4.5% came from Suffolk. So this represented entire Hampton Roads, all major seven cities. Where did they stay? 34% stayed in hotels and motels. 26% stayed at home. 21.5% stayed with friends and relatives. And there were about 5.6% apartment condos, and 7.3% in Airbnb or similar facilities. So besides the entertainment expenditures, as you will see, the second component of the economic impact is really lodging. Would they come back? This surprised me. 86.8% said extremely likely, 10.3% said quite likely, meaning essentially, most of them, except 3%, are likely to revisit this festival. Speaks volumes for this festival. When we're doing the survey analysis, coding of the surveys, I knew the tickets were expensive, so some people will say, what the heck was this? I wasted my money. I was surprised to see several comments which said, it was very cheap. Now, I don't go to these concerts, so I do not know if it's cheap or not, but all I can tell you is, there were hardly any complaints on the cost of the festival. So let's look at my rates. 61% of African-Americans, 19% are white, and others, as you can see here, Asians, Hispanics and others. Surprised me the most was the next one. Six, two in three were females. By the way, the previous group who actually did the survey analysis, Esther Decision called me up. He said, Doc, can you tell me from your surveys, what percent were women? I said, two in three. I said, okay, that agrees with me. So let's talk about economic impact on Virginia Beach. So let me spell this out very clearly as to when we do this analysis, how we do this. Any money which comes from outside of any area is used to calculate direct, indirect and induced effects. However, if your local visitors who said they will go outside of this area, we'll also include their spending to calculate direct, indirect and induced impacts. But those who said they would be right here, we call it substitution effect, meaning this money was not going anywhere, this money was simply being reshuffled from one place to other place, so therefore, only direct impacts are calculated. The last bullet is very important here. In general, smaller is the area, larger is the out-of-area expenditures. So for example, when we look at Virginia Beach, a person who comes from Norfolk is outside of Virginia Beach. However, because it's a smaller area, Virginia Beach, compared to Hampton Roads, it also has lots of leakages. Money flows out to buy goods and services outside of the area, so for a smaller area, multipliers are typically smaller. I want to emphasize this, because when you go from city Virginia Beach to Hampton Roads, this will play a role. Economic impact analysis of Virginia Beach was actually done by Ron, from SGA Office. I have gone through his drafts, several drafts, and the only reason I'm able to speak on this study is because I feel I started it. But those of you who may have noticed, he also used to be one of my students. The performer format is the same, I believe, as he has done for other festivals, so we're going to follow the same outline. So let's look at this festival first of all. The top half of this table represents expenditures that the visitors responded, their numbers. So you can notice here, Virginia Beach residents spent roughly about 20% of all spending. 80% of all spending came from outside of Virginia Beach. However, the first set of numbers include taxes, like lodging taxes, sales taxes, food and beverage taxes, entertainment taxes. So to do economic impact analysis, we have to get those numbers out, including the graduates. So these are the numbers which you see in the bottom panel, are the ones which are used in economic impact analysis. Not the 16 million, but the 13.9 million. So when you take, we use a model called IMPLAN, which is what the city has been using for quite some time, to calculate the direct, indirect and induced impacts. So 13.9 million dollars as a direct impact, we calculate the total impact to be about 21.77 million dollars. And if you look at taxes, can again see here, direct, indirect induced, the numbers speak for themselves. Direct taxes calculated are 1.136 million dollars, total is 1.189. These numbers have already been reported to you guys. These numbers were provided to us by the city. If something's wrong with these numbers, I have, I wave my hands. About 1.1 million dollars were spent for this festival by the city. If you look at 2014, 15 and 16 expenses for the College Beach Weekend, they were averaging about $259,000. I was told the numbers for '17 and '18 were higher, but because those numbers were not available to us, we simply used the average of those last three years. So we believe the city spent, on a net basis, $851,376, meaning if we did not have this festival, College Beach Weekend would have still taken place, and the city still would have spent about $260,000. So the bottom line for the city, you actually made a profit. You spent roughly $851,000. You narrowed it to 284, a tremendous amount of rate of return. For a festival of this type, which was, took about six months of planning, should have taken about two years, I would expect the city would lose money in the first year. We were surprised you didn't. So I want to give you some idea on this, for when the economic impact on Hampton Roads. Very interestingly, you can notice here that out-of-area residents spend a lot more money than Virginia Beach residents did. This is per person. Another interesting part here, if you could look at the bottom part of it, is, as you go to outside of the area, lodging at the hotel, the motel increases substantially. 10% of Virginia Beach residents stayed in hotels. Why would you want to stay in a hotel if you're a Virginia Beach resident? They were afraid of traffic. They wanted to be where the action was, and they wanted to party. Of course, you can also see 61% of Virginia Beach residents stayed at home. I'm sure that my daughter was surveyed, and she attended the festival, by the way. She would have said, I stayed at home, even though she came from Washington DC. Let's look at what we know from STR numbers, these are data we borrowed from Smith's Research, on Friday and Saturday nights for this year, on occupancies. Virginia Beach had a 93.6% occupancy on Saturday. Oceanfront, occupancy was about 95% either of these two days. Pretty high occupancy all across the region, so what this shows is, impact was not just on Virginia Beach. Impact was in every single sub-market in Hampton Roads. I want to note this, that Newport News Hampton had pretty high occupancy compared to every other area, including the entire city of Virginia Beach. Why did they do it? How did this happen? This is revenue per available room. Revenue per available room in Newport News Hampton was near the bottom of it. So visitors were selecting relatively inexpensive hotels compared to more expensive hotels. To give an idea for Virginia Beach, Rappa at Oceanfront Hotels on Friday and Saturday was $230 and $243. Now, you probably heard this before, the hotels here were saying that we already booked 60% or 70% or 80% at lower rates. So when they brought up this occupancy up, what did they do? They jacked up the rates. So Virginia Beach hotels became way too expensive. Some hotels were advertising rates as much as $499, whereas Newport News was advertising $199. So individuals make rational decisions at times. Now compare this, the same system, to what I call as a fact of the festival. Here, we are looking at five days of 2018, watch the same five days of 2019, Thursday through Monday. The reason we selected Thursday through Monday was because this festival took place on Friday, Saturday and Sunday. Some people could have come on Thursday, maybe would have stayed on Monday. By the way, we can do this analysis by day, whichever day you want to pick. We have the data for, I actually have the day data for our last six years, for every sub-market Hampton Roads. So occupancy went up everywhere. What about Rappa? I don't see anything else, do I? This event, I think, should be thought of as an event which has a regional ramifications. And the reason, by the way, I was interested in doing this economic impact analysis was because, you know, I have been preaching regionalism since 1981. I've been hearing all of you and everybody else talking about regional approaches. But here's a piece of evidence where, if we do things on a regional basis, we can do wonderful things. Economic impact analysis. Notice here, roughly half of the money came from outside of Hampton Roads. 16.2 million dollars, about 8.2 from outside, about 8 from inside Hampton Roads. But remember, 55% of these people were going outside. So in doing economic impact analysis, again, by the way, the second part again is, fall in the same pattern which you guys are used to looking at it, takes out taxes and graduates. So what is the economic impact? Direct impact was 14.6 million dollars. Direct, indirect induced impact is 24.1 million dollars. A phenomenal event for three days. So what does this report do not include? This report does not include any expenditure by the festival producers which went outside of this area. So the paid money to the artists, that is not included. It only includes their expenditures incurred inside this area. Second, it does not include expenditures incurred by sponsors, simply because we do not have detailed information on those. not have detailed information on those expenditures. So in all honesty, I would say these economic impact numbers are quite conservative, and if we were to include other expenditures, the numbers will go up, not go down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Aaron, and then Guy.
First, I want to say thank you, Dr. Fennar, for that presentation and explaining the numbers. And then to the council, I would, I would suggest, we have something special here. I mean, something really special that impacts our entire region. And to have a first-year festival that makes money is just quite astounding and surprising, and really good. But on the terms of regional cooperation to bring our region together, I mean, that's great, and that's extremely important. And I think it'd be incumbent upon us to think about ways that we can nurture this and continues to grow this, and continue our investment, our part of this, to make sure that this continuously be a bridge for our region to come together. One of the other things I'd like to mention is that, although this is the economic impact, what doesn't show, is the social impact, the intangible things, how our residents feel about our area, our city, about how much pride it brought our first responders and our staff workers, to say that we can have a festival of this caliber here, our residents that were so welcoming to our outside visitors. This has put Virginia Beach on the map in a completely different way. The economic numbers are great, but socially, that is what's going to continuously bring people to Virginia Beach, to an atmosphere that's free, that's open, diverse. The music was great, but this was much more than just music. I think this was about the best that each of us has to show, our individuality, what makes Virginia Beach and Hampton Roads so special. So on going forward, I'd like to see us continuously take this, nurture this, and figure out the ways we can do more of our part to invest in this and say, we're going to make this a mainstay, not only for our city, because economically it shows that that's great, but socially as well. So, thank you again for your report.
Thank you for comments.
Hey, Guy.
I'd like to endorse everything that Mr. Rouse just said, and I'd like to, as a matter of, point of personal privilege to welcome Dr. Argwall. I was working with him back in the 80s when we were working on regionalism, and I had the privilege of being the chair of the International Business Council for the School of Business at Old Dominion. And I learned more about international business in one afternoon with Dr. Argwall than the whole rest of my life put together. He's a great asset to ODU and to our community, and I am so delighted with the continual progress and growth of that program. And thank you so much, Dr. Argwall, for your part in this wonderful event. I enjoyed it personally, and I'm enjoying it here, months later, thinking back about it and reviewing these great results as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Michael, and then John.
Well, I'd like to join my colleagues in thanking you for participating in this analysis and for presenting this material to us. And I would like to also just associate myself with the remarks of Councilmember Rouse when he talked about the intangibles. One in particular that I happened to enjoy as a person who didn't have a ticket to the festival was the discussions that occurred at the convention center, and how those discussions really enriched the quality of life, I think, for everyone in Hampton Roads who had a chance to participate in those, by challenging us to think and contribute more broadly to life in our community. And that's just one example, as a person who didn't have a ticket. Which leads me to my question, just a point of clarification. Did the analysis include ticket holders versus non-ticket holders? Because it's possible that some of the impact is underrepresented in those who enjoyed parts of the festival without actually having purchased a ticket.
Thank you very much for asking this question. This study, we had no data on those who were not ticket holders. As I said before, this study represents, in my view, the smallest economic impact numbers. Does not include the intangibles, does not include all the positive images you saw, heard on television. But I would like to make one more comment on this. My daughter is 39 years old.
Me too.
She's an OB-GYN. She came from Washington, DC to attend this festival, and she has been to several of such festivals in her life. On Sunday morning, as she was getting ready to leave, she called two of my other daughters and made the following statement, and I was listening to it. This was the best festival she ever attended, and she wanted them to make sure they're available next year to come here.
I think it'll be on sale soon.
So what was amazing to me was, you know, I don't enjoy this kind of music, I'm sorry to say this, but I don't even understand half of what they say. But my kids are Americans. They're brought up in this culture. They understand this music. And one of my daughters said, why would Pharrell Williams do this in Virginia Beach? I said, he's from here. Okay, that makes sense. I'd like to also show you one more slide, and I'm going to skip something. Just look at change in room nights over the five days. Number of room nights increased in every submarket. And look at change in hotel revenues. 4.85 million dollars over the five days. Yes, roughly 45% came to Virginia Beach. But guess what? Every other city and every other market benefited. We can calculate lodging taxes right from here. I think every city should participate in events like this, in terms of sharing costs and benefits.
John?
I want to get back to Councilmember Rouse's view, because I know we didn't do it in this study, but maybe it could be a follow-on graduate student project. But corporations always have a good way of capturing goodwill on their balance sheets, and they show it as a dollar value when they publicly trade or merge. And I think what Mr. Rouse was referring to is, there is a corporate goodwill, that's a term I'll use because it's one used on financial statements, that is a product of this, and it would be a good project to take a historical look and try to capture and come up with a way to, if we were booking this on our...
Actually, could do this this year.
Oh, good. On our bond perspectives, and we put down corporate goodwill, what would that number be? And I think that's what I think Councilman Rouse was trying to get at. It would be a nice number to know. That's my only comment.
Oh, great. Anybody else?
I'm not a marketing person, so therefore I can't attach value to this, but I can find marketing experts.
Thank you very much.
Hey, Jess?
Thank you.
I had a, somebody was texting me while you were doing your presentation, on the surveys that you threw out or didn't use, could you just briefly go over why you take those surveys out?
A person that is here for 100 days, come on, you came here for the festival for 100 days? Doesn't make sense. A person spent a million dollars? Come on, give me a break. I mean, they basically answered which were meaningless. It didn't make any sense to us. But what we had done is, we had documented, we had documentation, on every survey we were throwing out, why we did this.
The other one for removed that didn't have a full set.
Sure, sure. No, no, I just wanted for...
Yeah. So we also had some people who said, I'm 14 years old. I didn't want, I didn't want it, so, right. So...
And it would be a fair statement to say that we had enough surveys to make a fair analysis.
You know, it's very interesting. Suppose I only had 300 surveys. I'll start making some assumptions about one guy says he has 100 days, maybe he made a mistake, he made only 10 days, he may have made only one day, but when I have so many surveys, I don't have to make those assumptions. Enough degrees of freedom, as they say, that I'd lose nothing by excluding them.
Thank you. I just wanted to make one comment, since it's really, we've talked about it before, but I think it's really impressive that we were able to turn this weekend into such a positive thing for our community and our city, and the value of not having violence and having the fact that our emergency responders were responding to people being dehydrated versus violence or tension or any kind of conflict. Really, I think that's probably the biggest value we could take from this, and I think Aaron said it, and I also wanted to just give some kudos to my colleague. I really think you stepped up and were an excellent leader on this, and I just really appreciate what you've done too, and all of the leadership that anybody who's put a part in that, I respect and appreciate it.
That, very, very good comment. Very good comment. Anybody else? If I could just say, without question, this feeling of positivity has the potential to continue. How many more people came to the beach, maybe for the first time, or haven't been here in years, that maybe rediscover our beach, their beach, you know, coming forward? And if we can capture that positivity going forward, you know, as we come up maybe with new attractions and people start living there year-round and everything, people can start taking back ownership and say, okay, this is our beach. They may live in Hampton or Williamsburg or anything, but you know, we're a destination out here. So I think that, as Aaron was saying, that feeling of positivity, you know, can be contagious throughout the year, and people coming here, and really helping us on a sustained economic. You know, this analysis was for one weekend, but can imagine if some of this transfers and translates, you know, throughout the year. So I think that's, you know, another thing to think about. But I'll tell you what, overall, you know, the presentations today were wholly positive, the comments for council are positive, and Rosemary?
I'd say there was a lot of angst in our community about this when it was coming. There was a lot of angst and fear, that people didn't know what to expect, and afterwards, everybody, when they relieved, but also, they were positive. I mean, everywhere I go, people were like, we're so worried, and there were weddings going on, and people, and all sorts of things, activities. At the end of the day, every, the response has been incredibly positive, and even beyond that, Pharrell has just taken us as a city under his wing. He's getting involved with our advertising for our tourism, with his creativity and his staff. He's got someone on staff that has moved here to be here full-time, and there's a lot of other really goodwill, and John talked about goodwill things happening that he's involved with, that it's just growing and growing, and I'm sure glad that our city has the happy song as its official song.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, sir, very much.
Thank you.
Great job by all concerned. Thank you. Okay, we will move on to council liaison reports. Anyone? John?
The ME Doc group, that couple Mondays ago, I believe it was, and a big discussion was on the potential for offshore and all the spin-off from the supply chain. It's an issue I can't discuss much or, for my own conflict, I did listen, so I'm just sharing with you what they did cover the topic, but there is a lot of potential there, and probably on a date that's appropriate sometime in the future, probably Bob could give you more details on that, but it was, there is a substantial supply chain impact of that over and above the initial investment in the actual offshore property itself. And there's a lot of opportunity, both for the locality and the region of that. But I'll leave it at that, but maybe Bob can come back and give us some more details.
That would be great.
That's my only liaison report.
Good. Any other liaison reports? Okay, council comments. Michael?
Mr. Mayor, as we move into a discussion about the legislative agenda, I would like to submit for the council's consideration that we ask the General Assembly to adopt legislation that would establish that conversion therapy for LGBT Virginians is an unlawful practice. Conversion therapy, which is also known by some as reparative therapy, is the harmful practice of attempting to change one's sexual orientation or gender identity. It is a discredited theory, and it's harmful to Virginians who are members of the LGBT community. It's demonstrated that a significant amount of individuals who are submitted to this practice are subject to much higher rates of suicide attempts and other forms of psychological harm. 16 states throughout the United States have adopted this ban, and I hope that my colleagues on council will include this in our legislative agenda, and I'll pass copies around now.
Thank you. John, and then Barbara.
Go ahead. I'll yield to Barbara.
I just also have an add-on. It's actually an issue that we had addressed last year, and the Green Ribbon Committee, of course, is interested in this as well, and maybe someone of bias can explain, having to do with the Shoreline Resiliency Fund, which is supposedly there to help people do things like elevating their houses and stuff, but I'll pass this around while we start.
Yes, ma'am, Mayor, members of council. This was established during the McAuliffe administration, but it set up a loan program for folks to be able to qualify for loans to help elevate their buildings and other issues to address sea level rise. What Mrs. Henley is suggesting, and we actually had it in your package last year, is changing it from a loan program into a grant program with some sufficient level of funding that it would actually be able to accomplish something.
The unfortunate thing is, we get things sometimes approved with no funding. I see.
I just have the one.
I'll pass some elsewhere.
I might interject that next week, you will have a briefing from Aaron Sutton and Tim Tempesco on our much recent success with elevating homes and also our grant application, pending grant application to acquire some properties that elevation would more...
This would help a lot, if it could be, if it could actually be a grant, it could actually be funded.
Okay. Thank you, Barbara. John, and then Jim.
I know we just got on our plates, I won't comment on here today, but I hope we can talk about it, because there's a number of things in this proposed VNL legislative priorities that are definitely, would cause the state to have to significantly increase taxes, and I certainly don't want us, if we are, I'd like us to take a public vote to say that we are in favor of asking the General Assembly to increase taxes, but there's a number of things in here which the VNL is pursuing, which I think are not in keeping with, but I think the tenor of this body is, and so I think we should have time to go through these, and I wouldn't want VNL speaking for me on a number of these items, because we just got this today. And also, we got a memo in here relative to SIPS, asking us to appoint citizens or potentially staff. I think before we let the staff go on the board, we got to ask ourselves if we have citizens that would like to serve, and we got to appoint them to that. And I know that's just something that we got today, wasn't in our packet on Friday. And also today, we got this thing on school funding also, and I just wanted to point out, just for some summary statistics, that in 2002, the state was providing 45.3% of the total cost of funding, and in 2020, it's 41.4%, so it is less. But more interestingly to the part, if you take the amount in 2002, which was $6,052 per student, and you put the inflation index from the Bureau of Labor in there, that would be, adjusted for inflation, would be $8,630 a student, when actually today, we are spending $10,000-plus dollars. In nominal terms, that's a 77.8% increase in spending, and in real terms, that's a 35.2% increase in spending over 18 years, so don't get excited. But on real terms, that means public education investment has gone up 1.95, roughly 2% per year in real terms over 2002. What's missing here, of course, is the amount of enrollment has declined since 2002, but I think the statistics and the percentages give you a better feel that we are paying a bigger burden, probably will continue to pay a bigger burden, is my judgment, and but in real terms, just like families' incomes have been flat, so in reality, school spending has gone up in real terms, like families' average income has been flat to negative. So that does show you the sacrifice our residents are making to continue to support our public schools, and I kind of think these analyses sometimes are absent from the stuff we get. And I hope that, we talked about having a retreat in September, was going to be about the budget guidance and things of that nature. the budget guidance and things of that nature, so I hope that we will have that in sometime in October or maybe after the five-year forecast in November, but I still think we need to have something that talks about our plan for what guidance we want to provide upfront on the budget, and I don't want it to escape us.
Mr. Lahey, didn't we put that on for the discussion on that next week for our workshop?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that is scheduled for next week.
Will that bond referendum be on that?
Yeah, I believe so too. Number of the initiatives you and I talked about last week are, you know, we're gonna be on.
Very good.
And Jermaine, to your comment on the school board, the vice mayor and I, and Mr. Lahey and his staff met with the superintendent, some school board members and their economic folks yesterday. We will be meeting next Tuesday, you know, prior to our workshop, and to address everybody's concerns, we allowed it extra time, so this way we're not going to be backed into a corner on, you know, having a hard break to get back, you know, Aaron?
No, ma'am, you finish your thought.
But we did move, we were gonna start at 3:00, but then we were gonna have our workshop at 4:00, and they had to be there, but it really didn't allow time, you know, for any type of meaningful discussion, explanations, and dialogue. So we intentionally moved it back an hour to allow ourselves times to, you know, flush out some of the things and build a better dialogue with our school board.
So we are having a joint session?
Yes, we are having a joint session next Tuesday.
What time? You say you moved it up or it's back?
We're moving it to 2:00 from 3:00.
Okay, and it will be like we did last time?
Right, it will probably, yeah, building that.
One more point, and maybe it's in here somewhere, I have my email, but I did ask a number of questions with regards to drainage. You know, last time we met in the workshop, I asked, the planning session, could we get a lot of details on the flow rates and whatnot on the data center? Not because I don't think it's a good project, but I want to understand the actual assessment. I asked a number of questions. Will I have those answers today?
I sent you an email.
I have an email? Let me just look and see for you.
At about 6:30 this morning, I think it was.
All right. Well, I'm already at work at 5:30, so...
Everyone, your questions are answered, so...
All right, I will go with you here, look.
I can print it off for you if you'd like me to.
No, that's fine. That would be great for all of us.
Okay, but you know, a lot of these things are being brought forward, but once again, a more robust discussion with our school board members, I think, is in order. Jim?
I just wanted to go back to the things that Barbara and Michael brought forward. So procedurally, we're adding these two items to this document.
Yeah. Here's my point. In the past, when we've done this, because I've been a victim of this myself, I haven't been allowed to add stuff at the end because it wasn't before the public could see it. So I do think the public should like by our process. I don't have any problem with being in the package at the end, but the public hasn't seen that, so how can we get comments? So I think they should be put on the next meeting, and when we can vote and comment at the same time. But I do think the public should see what they are and have a chance to comment on them before we vote.
Is that acceptable?
It is.
Okay. Okay, good point, Jim. Anybody else? Okay, I got a reminder from Regina Hilliard, that to remind that, you know, to score the folks that we have the nine RFP responses for the search firm for the city manager. So it's gonna be due October 8th, if we can do that. So hopefully then, once we come up with a couple finalists, we can bring them in for actual interviews and, you know, get the process rolling, okay? So I just have to give a reminder. Okay, at this point, Mr. Vice Mayor, how about a agenda review?
Okay, under ordinances and resolutions, we have speakers on items two and five. Is everybody okay with the other items? No, it could change. Okay, so two and five will be heard, okay. Under planning, item L1, Peter Coleman and Joan Shepherd, street closure, 709 Vanderbilt Avenue, District 6, Beach District, Mr. Tower.
Okay.
Okay. Robert and Janet Kotke, preschool daycare facility, 2660 West Neck Road, Princess Anne.
I've heard no opposition.
Okay. Chesapeake Bay Foundation, 3663 Marlin Bay Drive, Environmental Education Center, Bayside District. Item four, we have speakers on. Item five, Chanel Latham, Dongjo Kim, Assembly Use 4604 Pembroke Lake Circle, Bayside. Item six, and this has got an amended condition, number nine, that everybody should have, which says, parking of motor vehicles associated with this conditional use permit shall be limited to the spaces designated for 1181 Jensen Drive. No motor vehicle shall be parked within any portion of the public right-of-way or on the private street, Jensen Drive. And that is Michael Carlson, William D. Freerson III, conditional use permit regarding automobile repair garage, 1181 Jensen Drive, Beach District.
With that amendment, I think we're okay, but I've had a call on it. I'm not sure who's here. Have you got speakers on yet?
No.
You don't have any? Okay, with that amendment, then, that's good.
I got a question for you. When they amended it, did they, does the civil league know about it? Does the beach know about it, the area? I mean, does it change anything?
No, it doesn't change the intent. It's just, the only reason for the change was that the original version referred to a prohibition on parking in the right-of-way, and there was concern because Jensen Drive is a private road and not a public street that it...
There's no parking on Jensen Drive also.
That it should refer specifically to Jensen Drive, which it now does.
All right. Item seven, Christina Marchionne, Bruce and Susan Whitaker, conditional use permit regarding automobile repair garage, 2601 Production Road, District 6, Beach. No issue. Item eight, Monica Yvonne Lancaster, conditional use permit, family daycare home, 1505 Colebrook Drive, Centerville District.
That's good.
Item nine, TNS Lawn and Landscaping LLC, Bolt Sturridge Yard, 400 Davis Street, Kempsville.
I'm good.
All righty.
Okay, moving along, the chair will entertain a motion to recess into a closed session pursuant to the exemptions from open meeting allowed by Section 2.2-3711A Code of Virginia as amended for the following purposes. Publicly held property, discussions or considerations of acquisitions of real property for public purpose or of the disposition of publicly held property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining positions on or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A3. Dome site, historic Kempsville, Burton Station, tranquility, voter registrar office relocation. Public contract, discussions of the award of public contract involving the expenditure of public funds and discussion in terms of scope of such contract where the discussions in an open body session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body pursuant to Section 2.237A29. Dome site, legal matters, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Section 2.237A8. Voter registrar office relocation, historic Kempsville. And personnel matters, discussions, considerations, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body pursuant to Section 2.23711A1. Council appointments, council boards, commissions, committees, authorities, agency, and appointees. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Jennings?
Aye.
Ms. Henley?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Ms. Abbott?
Aye.
Mr. Rouse?
Aye.
Mr. Valucci?
Aye.
Mr. Towers?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Last name is...
Aye. Let's take a five-minute recess.